All right, good evening. I just remember there's a few staff members who are retiring this year, but before I do that, I just want to thank our entire staff, our families, and especially our students for their successful 2020-2024 school year. As you know, we ended last Friday as a half-day, just in time, so the heat wave that's coming up tomorrow. So we are kind of taking a few days to recharge, but I know the building leadership and the admin team will be back very soon, get kind of gear up for next year. But I do want to recognize some retirees. We recognized three of these staff members last week at the elementary school assembly. I want to recognize Patty Duggan, Cheryl Johnson, and Robin Brown, those three cafeteria workers of the elementary school who have been in the district for nine sixty-four years. So that is a great way to fill in a lot of institutional models from those three people, and they did a great job. And they got a nice send-up, standing ovation, some nice gifts from the entire class and school, and well-deserved, because they did a lot of hard work for our kids and our families. I also, lastly, want to recognize a member of our leadership team who is retiring again, but again now, who is with us this year as the interim special ed director, is retiring once again, and we wish him all the best, besides the time with their family, grandson, and everything that's been done for us this year. We'll see you in a nice couple weeks before he finally retires, but they can get a snap for our events.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
And each time you retire, the party gets less and less impressive. Each time you retire, the party gets less impressive.
I have not used any retirement parties, I'm that person.
I will move that we approve the minutes from the May twentieth school committee.
Second?
Do we hear it right?
Yes.
Seconded, any comments?
I do like the new cover page.
That's all good. Yeah, she was the editor of that piece. I don't know who requested that, but it's the Italian shoot.
A snapshot.
No further comments. Paper approval events.
I actually mentioned this the other night at the town meeting, there was no update from the last time I met each other a month ago, trying to find out what the deal is. So maybe we were excited to report, and it's kind of mixed and overshadowed, so I guess we could go ahead there. Yep, but it's a lack of communication.
Is there any response at all from the chairperson?
Uh, no. I was actually just checking right now, see if they would give you benefit of the doubt or see something today, but I didn't know.
All right, school representative report.
It's in your package on the day, it's on the agenda.
Do you want to introduce the day you're going to be at school today? So you think that was... This one? Yep, the old day. This is very similar to last one.
There's the last one, the group meeting.
I'm sure that's what I was saying, must I put the one in, I apologize.
Well, who blamed them, so?
No, I... What was the date on that one?
It's the May twentieth.
All right, moving on. School committee reports. The meeting, actually, that year. Tim and I are on the building grounds committee, and we met with Mr. Jordan Elect on Friday to address something. He noticed that we filed a district policy filed under KF under the school policies, and it has to do with the application for use of buildings and grounds, and it's a rather comprehensive document that was developed, last approved, I think, in, let's see, amended June nineteenth, two thousand and six. And in order for organizations or groups to use the school, the appropriate representative of the organization is supposed to fill this out and submit it, and ultimately, it is supposed to come before the school committee for approval above conditional permission granted subject to final approval obtained in the school committee at the regular meeting. And I've never seen one of these for approval. And honestly, I mean...
I have also, I have not in five years, so...
Yeah, but I think this has been a lapse in protocol, and the major thing with this is that it includes liability. Said promises are black on the condition of the consideration of the privileges herein above, and it is further understood and agreed that the town of Northbrook Field, Northbrook Field School Committee, their agents, servants, and employees shall not be liable for injuries and nor consequential damages suffered by anyone using said promises during the time here specified and representative agrees to pay all costs and expenses incurred by the town of Northbrook Field, and so on, in defending any suits brought against endangerment such injuries, so on and so forth. And then, so, you know, this is a legal document, and for some reason, this has not been... I mean, if they get filled out and filed somewhere, they have not gone through the full process, which would include approval by the school committee, and my opinion is that we should return to a full, full approval, given that we have thus far avoided any such liability issues. And, yeah, I think it would be good to get back into the swing of using it as it should be. It's important, all right, A, so we know who's using it and when, and it's also very necessary for the... This especially delves into the custodial staff as to who's available to cover the events, and it also covers if a member of the administration is on site, then the custodian is responsible for the security of the building, so that's an important thing. So that's my thoughts on that.
So, a couple times, what would you, if we go back to that policy?
Yep.
Which, and I go like Tim said, I'm all right, and I'm not trying to deflect this at all, but I've never seen this presented to the community in my three years.
Yeah, I think it's sort of a lapse.
And that's, not just using it to not be presented, when I sign these documents, I'm acting as an agent of the school district, so, you know, there is something that comes up. The school district, if I be signed, this does accept responsibility, and we are covered by our insurance agents. What would you like as far as the timeline? It's, you know, there are occasions, so we had about ninety-eight, just over a hundred building use forms that were signed this year.
Yep.
Where I signed, the building principal signs, Ray signs, and then those are kept in by their, you know, to Ray. Some of those events are state, are state-in-creeds, like Stu Field example, they meet, you know, once or twice a month in this room, so those are pretty easy to kind of capture. But is there a turnaround time that you want to adhere to, this being a new group wants to use a building that's a week before the event, a two before the event, and the meeting has just passed? How would you like?
Well, this one says the occasion was returned prior, fifteen days prior to activity. I mean...
Would you like to adhere to that specific timeline, so if someone does put in and it's past that, we just simply deny it?
Um, I mean, it's, I guess it would be good if everyone is aware of the necessity for it, to do a little more planning in advance, if something pops up, I mean...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sometimes they can invite other people to come in and day other events, to move their, like, soft practice indoors, so I think that whatever you can do, you just have to have somebody available to come up and sign it every time that would happen.
I think it would probably be a good, good idea to just look at the policies surrounding this, we have a policy subcommittee that could make sure there is language covering this. In the meantime, I would say to people that want to use the building, make sure you get it in ahead of time just to recover it. Right now, we don't have a meeting in July, so we're going to need to figure out some sort of language around that, or add into the policy that, you know, we can do that. There's also, what concerns me is if everyone else involved in signing this says yes, I feel like the school committee really is more in a position where just reviewing that all the boxes were checked.
Yeah.
I don't want to get into, like, determining who can use the building.
Right, but it's also, I think, as, I mean, I'm just reading it as it stands, I think this was last minute in two thousand and six, and in the rest, I was reading the rest of the document earlier today, and it mentions, like, use of material, school equipment and materials, like VHS tapes. I mean, there's some outdated language in there, I'm pretty sure they'll have VHS tapes on the file for use, public use. But, I mean, there's some language to be expanded upon in there, for sure, and I'm sure we could amend this to meet the needs of the school and demands of, you know, the community, but... We just want to make sure that it's, that we're actually using it, that the information in it is getting to the right people, that it's not just put in a binder and not, you know, people aren't aware of the activities going on.
Would you like me to take a look at it, make some revisions, some adds, deletes, and send it to the committee?
Yeah.
And then, when they judge for August?
Uh, yeah, I think they should be reviewed by the policy subcommittee.
Will you be voting on those tonight?
Yeah, that's a good point, I mean, it's a good thing, aren't here, and...
We can wait.
Well, we are waiting for the negotiation thing to be... So committees, we are assigned, so I'll leave to find out who wants to serve on committee.
Okay, we can table that, that's fine.
I just want to get this in the pipeline, sort of on some kind of track, because, again, if, if they haven't filled out, great, but feedback errors, he means that these don't always get posted, so that staff are aware of the events taking place, and so there's no surprises for preparation in fixing these events.
But there's two things policy committee needs to look at, there's one which is, you know, filling out the form and where the form goes, but then, once it's all approved, you know, firming up what the dissemination of that form is, who gets it filed where, and where is it posted, or whatever, so it's kind of like a two-part policy look that we want to give. This is brought to attention recently, but again, I haven't seen it done here either.
I think it'd be good to return to that, I mean, if you are signing them, you know, approving them, and, you know, there's no issue why it'll be...
Then anything would change, sure.
Sean, can I add something on that? Sure. I'm going to have to think that historically, yes, the states back quite a ways, that a director of buildings and grounds would have been involved in coming up with these policies. What we see on these building use forms is extremely limited to the actual substance that went into manufacturing that form, even on the building use that I got from your office today, literally to your question about those, you know, all of a sudden, events that have to happen for, in Clement, or the whatever, it literally says on that form that you have people sign. Use of facility on school vacation, school cancellations, and in summer will be very limited due to staffing and cleaning responsibilities. Alternative arrangements should be made, yes, through school vacations, cancellations, and in summer. And that's not clearly being adhered to, but the actual substance that goes into creating this is probably fifteen pages of responsibilities. It literally micro-manages this into who can actually use these facilities because it is the property of North Brookfield, and it should be the residents of North Brookfield that have a say versus, you know, superintendent or whatever, the representatives to the people. It's literally not a small deal to redo this and to consider all things. I don't feel as though it would be accurate without involving the buildings and grounds, you know, at least getting their input. I think you'll be, if you were surprised by seeing an actual building form, you may be even more shocked when you read actually what makes it up.
Yeah, I read it earlier.
These are all in the same file?
There is quite a bit, it's a file KF, if you want, it's online, it's on the Public School website. But, yeah, I think the subcommittee should meet with whoever the current representative of building grounds department is, at the school, and, you know, work through the language to make sure areas still applicable and, I'm sure, there's, there's so much, there's all these boxes to check, you know, what were we going to use, how much furniture are you going to eat, are you going to, is there going to be food, you know, there's all kinds of things.
It takes into consideration a lot of things.
Yes, it really does, and it's, it's a very comprehensive document, it covers quite a bit, so, I think as long as it's filled out and there's good understanding between the staff and who's covering the event, should be a smooth process, but I think it's just because the, the policy has lapsed in its use and scope in how many years, it would just be good to return to using the form as it was intended, is my take on... I guess we'll just have to wait until we have a policy subcommittee and table it until the appropriate people can speak with building grounds and you can take a look at the language, you know, update some of the technicalities as far as, like, you know, resources that are available and so forth, that would be good, because I'm sure there's other, like, you know, use of Chromebooks and, you know, things like that, that are just not included necessarily, so, do you have any comments on, on this topic?
And so, in the meantime, if anyone needs to use the facilities, make sure you fill out the form, you have yourself plenty of time, don't, don't wait till the last minute just so we can ensure everything's been all set.
There's even more information, in the actual KF file, it literally says to applicants, citizens of North Brookfield...
We're going to, we'll have the policy subcommittee look into this, we can't solve anything here right now.
You're talking about people that have forms filled out now to use the facility, it's literally going against this policy to do that, with the current use that I know is happening all summer, is Champions Program, they're not citizens of North Brookfield.
Well, there's fees associated with that, in that document, there are fees per hour for, for using the facility, and that's another thing, is like...
This is use of the school facilities to town residents, is what it says.
Right, but we, as a committee, we approved the program to take place in schools, so they're approved, they're approved to use the facility, so...
Then that would be something to change, apparently, because currently it says that it's not being adhered to with the policy.
Well, the clients are students, students of North Brookfield.
They're not the applicants.
No, they're all, they're all minors, so...
They're not the applicants, the applicants is an agreement between the town of North Brookfield, the people that own this building, and the organization...
These students are children of taxpayers.
The applicants...
The committee approved the use of the facility, approved Champions to use the facility.
The first page on the use agreement says name of applicant, that's not a child's name that gets put in there, this is the person responsible, the applicant, is the adult responsible, and that's a corporation out of Oregon.
So the, the respondent, as school committee members, we are representing the community, and we approved this program to use the facility...
And I get that.
...on behalf of the children, so it's an approval.
That was all with this not being known, you didn't know any of this.
Right, so I guess we could amend it so that, you know, these programs, ongoing programs...
Something should be put in place, I'm not arguing any of it, I'm literally saying that's what you need to do, is make that correct, so that you can fill out the rest of the forms with these people the right way.
Right, we can do, there's, I'm sure there's a, there's a recurrence function in here, I'm sure, for, you know, ongoing student meetings, you know, monthly meetings, and so forth, there are ways of build, making that into these forms, you can say, you're the responsible party, you're representing the Champions Program, here are the hours of operation, here's what we need to do the program, and, you know, that should inform the staff and administration of exactly who needs to be on site to support the program. And that's the intent of this, of this form, and if it's filled out properly, and everyone that's on it is in agreement, fantastic, and then we won't run into any issues like this.
Exactly, but currently, for them to fill out the rest of the form, it's still, according to this, not right, I don't know if you have to change that in your policy with a vote, you can do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, again, the policy, that, again, this is above conditional permission granted subject to file, people can, the school committee, regular meeting, I mean, we could change that so that, you know, for these last-minute things, the school committee can grant, you know, that the superintendent is asking, is acting in the best interests of, on behalf of the school committee in approving these uses, so, you know, that's something that can be looked at and, you know, discussed with the policy subcommittee. So there's a lot to dig into, again, it's...
On that one in particular, that I keep going to, the applicant, citizens of North Brookfield, where it says that, literally, the position would be that we would change that to open to basically anyone, anywhere, we will, we will rent this building, the town's building, that's basically what I'm saying, you want to change where it says applicant to basically anybody.
There is a, there's a fee schedule in there built in, and I'm not...
That's what I'm asking, I'm asking on who we will let the building...
We're going to comprehensively go through this and figure it out, because right now, the way you're interpreting it, if we have a teacher who is an advisor to a student group, they have to fill that out because they are the adult that's doing this thing.
So there's a school collecting...
So what you're saying right now is if the teacher does not live in town, they cannot fill that application out, and if that's the case, then we need to evaluate the form and change the wording.
That's not what I'm saying at all, I mean, that does happen if you have a student group...
That's what you're saying, you specifically said resident of North Brookfield. We are going to evaluate this and figure out what needs to be changed to make sure everything is fine, get a new policy so that we can have who fills out the form, what the form does, and who gets copies of the form. We can't solve that right now, but we are initiating that discussion.
Yep, I understand that.
All right, I'll consider this discussed, and, again, it'll be handed off to the policy subcommittee for discussion. Let's see. Any other...
We're essentially working on that over the summer, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, you know, we don't have the week.
I mean, there is the summer Champions Program, but, again, as long as there's communication to the program and the staff...
If you like, I can start working on a revised draft of this policy, which I'm sure we first, we need first, and then we will, yeah, we can have a lot of...
I think it's important to address it, try and make it real tight, we came up with a lot of cases.
No.
Yeah, I don't believe there's any other reports, any other subcommittee issues, I guess there's maybe outstanding building grounds because there's still tasks to address there, but with the departure of Ray, just, so you don't have to fill that role and not take up the mantle. Moving on, yeah, we'll have a presentation.
All right, so I'll just give a brief context, so we can introduce our special guests this evening. So, back earlier this year, I'd been with Bonnie Miller and Lee Chaney, we were there as well, and for those who, you who not know, Bonnie runs recording studio here in town, and both Chaney and Bonnie are very much involved with Cool Pits Choir, which has been, I think, around for...
Thirty years.
Thirty years. I've had the pleasure of watching the concerts in the past, and I'm very impressed with both of you and our students. Add into the mix Deb, Arnold, and Joan, who's in the back. We discussed, we have been discussing, it's been an ongoing conversation of how we can further impact the instruction, the achievement, the success of our students, and I think that there's a lot of research behind this, there's a lot of research both in rural America and urban America that supports the arts and how they can be used within the classroom to support instruction, education, and student achievement. So I want to turn over to Bonnie and Chaney and the team to give a presentation. I think this is something that we should look to phase in next year, kind of a soft phase in, if you know, year one, I did have a conversation with union leadership about this, and it's something that I think we can, we can phase in, and we can see what works and what does not work, but I think there's a lot of potential here, a lot of great things for our kids, so I'll turn it to Bonnie, you get to start.
Great, so I'd like to start by just giving everybody, Deb, could you introduce yourself just in a little sneakier background? If you wanted up here, yeah, just so, why are you here? I'm a town member, I've had four children go through the system, I'm the school committee chair, and I'm a committee for nine years, the end of the nineties into the two thousands, I think I wrote that...
Policy?
Policy. Yeah, it's all coming back to me. I'm an artist, I have a great love for the school, a great passion for the school, and I was also on a task force, the educational task force, that was tasked to do this research by the select board back in two thousand and ten. There's a lot of, uh, research both in rural America and urban America that supports the arts and how they can be used within the classroom to support instruction, education, and student achievement. So I want to turn over to Bonnie and Chaney and the team to give a presentation. I think this is something that we should look to phase in next year, kind of a soft phase in if you will, year one. I did have a conversation with union leadership about this. And it's something that I think we can, we can phase in and we can see what works and what does not work. But I think there's a lot of potential here, a lot of great things for our kids. So I'll turn it to Bonnie. You get to start.
Great. So I'd like to start by just giving everybody, Deb, could you introduce yourself just a little sneakier background?
Once I get going.
If you wanted up here, yeah, just how, why you're here.
I'm a town member. I've had four children go through the system. I'm the school committee chair and on the committee for nine years, the end of the nineties into the two thousands. I think I wrote that.
Policy?
Policy. Um, yeah, it's all coming back to me. Um, I'm an artist. Um, I have a great love for the school, a great passion for the school. And I was also on a task force, the educational task force that was tasked to do this research by the select board, um, back in 2010. And we came up with a report in 2011 about what were the paths that the school could follow? What was possible, what was probable, and, um, the reasoning behind it, all the statistics. It took us a year, um, of meeting, there were four of us. And we did surveys with parents, with general public in town. We did a lot of research on it. And there were three things that stuck out to us and our report shows it. One, and it's in no particular order, one is to stay the same, stay a small school as long as we can. And I think we've done that. The second was to regionalize, and we pretty much exhausted that. And the third was to become a small niche school. So it would be something special that we could do here that would attract not only the students in town, but students from other communities. And it would be a good resource for the school. It would be great for the kids. And, um, when I, I spent some time at one of the finance committee meetings. And I was very distressed that this, there's no vision. There's no vision for this town right now as far as the school. And I spoke, um, on behalf of the school, saying how it's very important to speak highly of the school because the school, it should be the center of the town. As the school goes, if you have a healthy school, you'll have a healthy town. If you don't have a healthy school, you won't have a healthy town. And, um, it's, it's a fact that you can look up. It very much reflects in the town what the school does. So after that, um, I found out that Bonnie already had a program. And I've known Bonnie for thirty, forty years. And I've known Chaney, and I didn't realize that she was also to go with this, the two of them. And that's when I got excited.
Yep, yay.
And then we got Dr. Darkar. Tell us about you.
Just a quick, why you got tangled up with us?
Quick one too, yeah. I got tangled up with you because this is what I do. I grew up in North Brookfield and I probably come from North Brookfield High School, self-sustaining then. We had over two hundred students at that time, so it was doing well. And, um, just as a way to get involved in the town, I use my expertise. I'm a professor in graduate school of education at University, raised my two kids here, former public school teacher. And I happened to reach out to my buddy, Deb's husband Bruce, uh, just to, he was very helpful in my recent Select Board Good. He was just a wonderful guy to talk to. And he happened to post something on Facebook, what did the music program mean to you? And that elicited a flurry of responses from folks about what it meant. And I met my spouse in our music program and how meaningful it brought me back there. And I reached out to you, to Bruce, and connected with you. And here I am, the three other women who can never shake me because this program is so incredibly exciting. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thrilled to be able to share this with you.
We're lucky.
Oh, that's perfect.
And Chan?
Yes, I'm Chaney Blank. Um, I'm a special education here at the elementary school, KN1, special ed teacher. Um, I'm also an artist, a musician, a mom, a community member, born and raised here. And Bonnie and I go way back. She was my director of Cool Kids as a little kid, and I'm my music producer, manager, and now her best friends and collaborators.
Yes. And my name is Bonnie Miller, and I have been in town since the late seventies. I'm, um, up on the hill up at Longview. I started as a horse stall cleaner and then ultimately became, um, the owner and have been for a number of years. We do, for many, many years, you all know, we had artists come in from all over the world to record at Longview. The past several years, starting with the pandemic, and then we kind of liked it after that. We're, um, doing mostly music for film and television and producing our own content. And we have some exciting things coming up at Longview. But my most important achievement in my life has been the Cool Kids Choir program here in North Brookfield, which has just finished its thirtieth year. Literally thousands of the town's children have been through that program. I was recently in a restaurant where somebody came up to me and said, are you Bonnie? I'm a Cool Kid. And I love that they refer to themselves in the first person, that, you know, first tense. I'm a Cool Kid and I'm in school right now to become a neurosurgeon. And it's because you taught me focus is not focus, focus is what works. So Cool Kids is a program that uses music as a vehicle to teach life skills. That's important because, I'm gonna get to that in a little bit. Before we go any further, just so that people can listen with a certain mindset through this presentation, is that we're not talking about having a music school where kids learn how to become professional trombone players in the orchestra or professional painters. That is not what we're talking about. We're talking about using music, the arts in general, which also includes things like robotics, music programming, production, video production, a lot of technology. Using that as a vehicle to teach the fundamentals, math, science, English, all that. When you incorporate the arts into it, it changes how people learn, how they think, and how they remember. And this is all borne out by science. So before we go any further, we're not talking about turning North Brookfield into a music school. That's not what this is about. So I do want to tell you that for the past ten years, um, you know, you get on and long in the tooth and you start to think about your legacy, and the famous artists and the platinum records don't matter anymore. What matters is the mark you leave on the world as you travel through it. Again, the Cool Kids, I received awards from the National Association for Superintendents, from the House of Representatives, from the Senate for that program for its innovation. Those are on my wall. I don't have gold records and platinum records on my wall right now, but I have those on my wall. So I've spent the past ten years working all over the country, a lot in New York City, working with, um, communities that are challenged in terms of resources. And that pretty much comes from the entire country right now in the educational system. By using the arts as a vehicle for kids to tell their stories, um, also for them in particular to learn about science. That was my thing, my degrees in science, so I really focused in on that. Working with kids using music and the arts to learn science, the results are amazing. So all five boroughs of New York City, Los Angeles, Florida, um, East Nashville, several towns in and around New England, and the results were the same. So then I started really digging in and researching this business of what they call interdisciplinary education. And that's where you use, can you back up and say? Yeah, and I've got great books for everyone to read. I'm very passionate on this subject. Of what the arts do to neurodevelopment in the brain, opening pathways for learning is absolutely stunning. It's an underutilized research. One of the big buzzwords in education right now is interdisciplinary education. And that's where you use more than one discipline to teach a subject. That's what we're talking about here, so I wanted to just set this stage for them. I'm going on and on, right?
You're doing.
Okay, great, all right. So part of what we have to do here, and I know that, um, that I might say some things in ruffled feathers, but I've been in town for a long time, and I think people know that that's not something that's scary to me. I like the truth and truth with kindness and truth with appreciation and care and love for the town, but the truth. That's what's really important. So we know, we already know what the advantages of our school district are. And here I do want to say, one of the resources that I've recently discovered is Tim McCormick. And I'm not blowing smoke. This is somebody who wants the community involved in the school system. As you folks were talking about the form, I was thinking, sitting here, you know, and I don't know process the way you guys do in bureaucracy, so forgive me, I'm an entrepreneur. But I'm sitting here going, the heck with the form, let's get as many people in the community into this school as possible. All that aside, John, I know forms are really, I don't cover between the lines as much as I should. But yeah, I think that's one of the things that Tim has really encouraged is letting us get involved with solutions. So we know we've got beautiful buildings. We know we've got a dedicated administration. We know we've got a great school committee that's really researching all the options. Tim, thank you so much for your work. I'm a secret fan. We have a lot going on in our town and in the school system, and we know it's great. But just because we know it's great, we still have to have the courage and the bravery to look at what's not working. That doesn't mean we don't love the school. It doesn't mean we don't believe in the school, any of those things. But I couldn't resist the Taylor Swift quote there. It's me, I, I'm the problem, it's me. Let's really look at the problems. Now, these are the problems from our little committee's perspective. This is reality. As hard as it is to look at, this is the truth. And we, I truly believe that we need to realize that we're spending a lot of time scraping deck chairs on a ship that's sinking. And we need to have the courage to look at that. I really believe that. And I've spent thirty years coming in and out of these buildings, two kids have gone through, not all the way through the system, but have participated in the system. And I have the perspective of traveling all over the country to see what's happening. We have declining test scores. We've got funding challenges, like a lot of people. We have attendance problems. We've got a high dropout rate in the choice hour rate. We've got prevalent apathy going across the staff and the students. That's the truth. And we have a lack of a differentiator for school choice. So the differentiator that we've been using is we're a small school. Come here because we're a small school. I think the numbers tell the story that that's not appealing to people. Coming here because there's small numbers is not something that people are saying, yay, let me sign up for that. They're just not, that's the reality. But when you dig in on the research, Joan has done extensive research on this subject specifically. I have as well. In fact, I've been invited to speak twice now in Boston at large gatherings, talking about exactly what this slide says. And that is that the same challenges that we're having in our town are ones that are happening all over the country. There's a national creativity crisis. This is important. When we say a creativity crisis, again, doesn't mean we don't have enough trumpet players in the United States of America. That's not what that means. What that means, if you look over, there was a Newsweek cover article about this. At the same time that the US started removing arts programs from the school, China started investing in arts programs in their schools. Again, this has to do with how studying the arts affects brain development and your ability to do complex reasoning, problem solving, and adaptation to fast-moving technology and world. At the same time, they started investing in it, we started taking it back, and the proof has come in. We've got eighteen hundred CEOs that are saying they can't find candidates that can think creatively. That's a fact. There are resource challenges in rural America. That's across the board. One of the things that we see when we go into inner-city schools is there are gazillion nonprofits operating in the schools. And the reason they're operating in the schools there is because nonprofits are funded by impact metrics. So the more kids you impact, the more you get funded, the more you can do your work. So if you're a nonprofit and you can go into a school in the Bronx and impact two thousand kids and families, or come to North Brookfield and impact ten kids and families, you don't do it. So you go to, go to the Bronx. So there's an unbelievable resource challenge in rural America. I've spent time speaking on the state level to people saying, somebody's got to have the guts to turn that around and say, the heck with impact metrics, we're gonna fund things going into the schools. Lo and behold, if you put into Google, available funding for arts programs in rural schools, the list is unbelievable. People know that this is the solution. They know they need to invest in it, and it's there to put into place. So the answers to these, these problems in our school, and again, I'm not ragging on our school system. This is a problem across the board. We had an extra hired right now, I believe, this is my opinion, I won't put that on you folks. I believe that one of the big obstacles to, are now dealing with this is a false sense of pride. We're very proud of our little school and we're very proud of our little town, and I totally get that. But we've got to take that next step and look at it clearly, and it's time for radical, bold change. It really is. So here are the answers. This is borne out by data. This is what saves schools, if you will, alternative educational offerings, interdisciplinary instruction curriculum. This is the big thing, finding gateways in. You want to teach history, um, create a play about whatever that point is in history. Have the kids write the play, excuse me, and perform the play. And they will remember that stuff till the day they die. Whereas if you try and stand up in front of them and lecture, um, about a certain time in history, they won't remember it a year from now. This is the data. Opportunities to feel pride. This is what changes lives. I've worked with a woman who travels, literally, she'd recently retired, both of them, but she'd retired. She traveled all over the world, working with governments actually to help working communities to have, sort of, communities become uplifted through arts integration. And I asked her, what her, as she traveled around our country, what was the biggest problem she saw? Drugs, violence, you know, teen pregnancy, what was it? She said a lack of opportunities to feel pride. That when somebody feels proud, but it has to be authentic proud. You can't say to the kids that are in a school that they know is struggling, oh, feel really proud about your school. They know that that's not authentic. We need to give them true opportunities to feel pride that are recognized by the world outside of this small community. For instance, we came in and did that, our future video, um, with the kids in the high school here. It was viewed, I don't know how many times, close to a thousand times from people all over. That, that's where impact happens. That's where kids know their voice matters. That's where they want to come to school, and they want to create, and they want to build, and they want to authenticate their existence. The other thing is executive functioning skills for all students. And then the last one is the one I have, differentiators. What makes your school different? And I'm gonna say here again, at the risk of being obnoxious, saying that we're a small school is a differentiator that is not working. We have to look at that. It's not working. We need something else. I also want to just pause for a moment and say to you that I got a new shoulder just a couple days ago. And I sure would have missed this meeting, but I feel so strongly about this that I'm showing up. My hands are now at the point where I'm shaking and, um, so I'm reaching my, the end of my thing, which is good for you because I'll be quiet. So we came up with Cat Lab Creative Action and Thinking Laboratory. And this would be a solution for the North Brookfield School District. It would start, as, as Tim said, it's not something that we have to, oh, no, we're gonna make this giant radical change and we have to do it right away. No, we start with a pilot program this coming fall. And we, it's done very official. In other words, the, the people who know about such things, Chaney, Joan, Tim, is a team. We've come in and measured the results. What is, with the kids that participate, what is happening to their attendance? What is happening to their test scores? What is happening? Years ago in Cool Kids, we went through a short period, a couple of years where we did the data collection, and it was stunning. We had kids that completely turned around based on this one little teeny mini program. But we're also creating something that would address the national creativity crisis, which is what's gonna make our kids more valuable in, no matter what they want to do. If they want to do carpentry. If they want to do carpentry, you need to be creative in order to do that. You walk in, God love the people who come in to work at Longview from the eighteen twenties, it's like they're walking into a labyrinth. You need creativity, no matter what job you go into, let's do that. So how CatLab would work, eventually, each day, students would participate in a cooperative, collaborative, creative endeavor. We would bring, there's a reason for this, Tim. We'd bring creative people in from the outside world. Somebody like myself, who's a music producer, comes in, and I work with, whoop, right? You bring the outside person, and they have to be all Corey, they have to have educational background, but every one of us, it seems, in all the forms of the arts, are looking for ways to not just give back up to perpetuate the work, so there's no shortage of people. They would come in and work with the educator, so we'll get into this a little bit more. Let's say there's a math teacher who is in the high school or junior high who's teaching algebra. And the creative professional is going to do a drum program, and they sit with the math teacher ahead of time and say, okay, what are you teaching in algebra? What do you need the kids to learn? And then together, they design a drum program that helps the kids learn that, that algebra thing, same with science, same with history, with English. So the creative professional works side by side with the teacher, but they're doing a creative project. This does a couple of things. First of all, it infuses some energy and enthusiasm into the teaching staff, because they've got some outside people coming in. Also, the kids, of course, are new faces, and new faces from outside. One of the things we hear over and over and over, and heard it here during our future program, is the kids said, we can't, because we brought in big videographers, and it was a big production. Very famous music producer came in and recorded them, and they kept saying, why are you here? We don't matter, we're this little town. And we kept saying, because you do matter. When that happens over and over and over, they realize they do matter, and man, do they set up straight, and do they achieve? It's really exciting to watch. But, oh, all right. Stay focused. All right. CatLab examples. So here's some just examples that could be done. Vocal music, life skills for kids, so, you know, we could do a sort of Cool Kids version, because that's what Cool Kids does and teaches. Life skills, things like respect, self-discipline. I keep looking at you, because your smile makes me relax. Look right away. Drum corps for teaching math, songwriting for English and history. When a kid writes a song about the person that they were learning about in history, when they write this song and then record it, and then it gets put on YouTube, and they get to share it with everybody they know, and they see those lights going up and up, they will never forget that history, that song. And that's not just because it's fun and it sizzles, it's because the brain gets rewired in the best possible way. It's not like whole things, but yeah. And then there's basic videography is another option for scene learning, basic recording for math and engineering. There's examples here for junior high students, I'm not going to read them all through, because you can do that, and for high school students. Now, these are not things that we're making up on the fly. These are programs that exist, that people are already doing, that I know and have been exposed to, that Joan knows and has been exposed to, Chairman as well, and Deb has been just right on top and excited about all this. So here we go. Let's get into the thing. CatLab could start an overlay program as soon as this fall. That would be the pilot program, and I'll get into in a minute what that would talk about. We know the school doesn't have any funding available for this sort of point blank. I believe so strongly that this trajectory will end up elevating the school system and five years from now will be self-sustaining. We would fund it initially, all through sponsorships, grants, all outside funding, community participation. And we know how to do it on the shoestring to start and build. And then, one of the things that becomes very important, and this is one of my core competencies, and one of the things that I bring to the group, is marketing. We tell everybody in the world about what we're doing and what we're building, and we generate enthusiasm in Boston, we generate enthusiasm nationally. From the moment we start, we start videotaping, and we create a documentary about the building of the program, and we get the word out about it, which in turn gets us more funding, funding coming in from all over. And then we do a phased success-based growth plan. So again, this wouldn't be measured by artists. This would be measured by people who know the educational world, know how to measure properly when something's working and when it's not working, so that it can be adjusted along the way until the kid's cruising altitude. But it's not voodoo, like, oh, the children are loving singing. No. It is attendance getting, going to hear the metrics that we want to hit, here's the improvement in year three. How many kids have choiced in because of CatLab? It's all data-driven, and that's very, very important. Not mine or anyone's, but fortunately, we've got people who do that. So in year one, the pilot program, that would ideally be this fall, if the school committee feels like this is something to look at. I know I'm talking about big changes. I do want to say here, it's time for big change. It's time for us to try something bold and something that's researched. So we would start with two classrooms per each school. By schools, I mean the elementary, middle, and high school. So we would have two teachers who would agree to be pilot programming teachers from each of those. We've had loose discussions with people. The enthusiasm, I think I can simply say, and I'll look back here, is high amongst the teaching staff. People are excited about having the influx of energy and having outside people coming in, having the visibility in the world. So we would pick two classrooms in each of those, and we would run one program in each of those classrooms. And then we would measure, 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 see how it's working, see how kids are responding. If it doesn't work, no harm, no foul, right? School hasn't paid anything out of pocket, there hasn't been any, we try it, and nobody liked it, it didn't work, numbers didn't improve, no big deal. I cannot tell you how strongly I feel about that one, but we can guess. And then we've got the expected results. Then in years two through five, in year two, let's say we're successful, and this is like something everybody, the teachers all want to have CatLab in their classrooms, they want to have some form of CatLab coming in and out of their classrooms. CatLab would become a school within a school. So we would have a couple of classrooms, only to consider home base, we would be increasing the programming across the board, measure, 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 funding's still coming from outside. Funding would need to come from outside, as long as we can get it from outside. And I think over time, it would end up that so many kids would choice in, that the school would be thriving, and we'd have a waiting list. I really do believe that. I'm not being overly, I know it sounds that way, I'm not being overly enthusiastic. I had a dear friend who went into, in the Bronx of New York City, they evaluate the neighborhoods in New York City by five factors. One's graph population, poverty, crime rate, those five factors. This particular neighborhood is the worst for all five factors in all of New York City. And he came into the school system there, the graduation rate was, it was less than twenty percent graduation rate. Terrible, terrible, unsafe school, lots of stuff going on. He implemented interdisciplinary creative education in that school. They are one of the top schools in New York City now, and that happened within five years. And there's case study after case study after case study. We'd establish a strategic partnership with one of the universities around, so that imagine a situation where students who are studying the arts at Berkeley or Worcester State could get credit for helping to teach one of these classes here in our school system. I had conversations with Berkeley a couple of years ago, as I was starting to learn about this, and I said, what about the thing where doctors get some of their loans paid off if they don't work in a rural community for a certain number of years? And would you guys consider something like that for arts educators, where if they come and work in here, they either get credit or some of their loans? They were fascinated by that, that would be something we pursue. And then maybe down the line, we would become a creative arts, not creative arts, CatLab, Creative Action and Thinking. We would become a Creative Action and Thinking magnet school. Imagine that, where kids came in from all over, because our kids are getting the engineering jobs, they're getting the things, again, see, over and over, we're not churning out trumpet players. So what would we need to do for next step is that we'd all need to commit to taking bold action. And it would be bold action. And then we'd form a CatLab committee that would include the four of us, of course, Tim, any of the leadership team from the school that would want to participate, a couple educators, so maybe somebody from the school committee, and we'd design the programming for the fall. We'd see who wants to do what, we'd have the sort of sidebar with you three on how we're going to measure the results of what's going on. And then we'd start working to really get the funding in, regardless of whether we get funding in. Being an entrepreneur, Chairman and I have already worked together, we could start this programming with what we have for resources right now in the fall for the pilot program. So we could start, but we would need to get going on funding, because we're going to want to expand and expand quickly, so we need to do that. We need to design and implement a marketing plan to really get word out, interviews happening about what's going on, all that good stuff. We need to communicate and generate enthusiasm within the Department of Education, and design and implement a phased growth plan. So in conclusion, I believe, and I'm trying not to put you three in the fiery line, I can't sit, thank you.
This is my review.
But we really believe that the school districts at a crossroads, and we can either keep doing the things the same way we've been doing, with all of our pride for our little school, and hoping that regionalization opportunities, or we can start doing something now that could really create change, and could be something that could be a model for other schools in small districts all over the country. This is cutting-edge education, and we are really, really fortunate that we have Tim who's willing to go out on a limb and allow us to even experiment with. I think it's because it's back in, in the science of education. But thank you, Tim, for allowing, there's a lot of years where, as a community member, I didn't feel that I could contribute to the school system, I didn't feel welcome. There were a lot of years where I did. But with Tim being involved, he has really encouraged ideas, and that's something I'm very, very grateful for. So that's that.
That was kind of a great answer.
You look good to you guys holding up great.
Tim, I'm the talker, that's why they're only getting, you, Tim. That's how they get in front of the design and talk. Does anyone have any questions?
I had a couple. So if we were to move forward with this program, where the four of you get together and train the teachers, start to work with the teachers, as far as, you know, how the curriculum would change, how things would work within that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So how it would work is first, we'd put together that committee, which would bring a couple of teachers. And then, when it comes to the existing teachers with their existing curriculum, drive our effort versus the other way around. So they say to us, this is what I'm teaching, this is what I want to accomplish, this is what I need to do. And then we sit with them and stipple ideas of how we could do that together to elevate their, what they're already teaching.
Okay. But do you have like, like a course book, or a, like a, some sort of a plan already put together, like things that other, that other groups have tried, it's worked well, just didn't work so well?
We do have, we do have that anecdotal sort of information, and a lot of things that we've seen people doing in other schools. We wouldn't design it in advance, we would be reactive. So when the teacher says, this is what I want to do, we then go away and research. Joan.
One of my areas of expertise of learning experience design and technology, so if you look at instructional design models or learning experience design models, we're moving away from instructional design, iconic learning experience design, because as you can see here, learning is experience, right? Backwards design, for example, you look at, you want to look at the problem in such a way, almost like backwards, and so that's kind of what we do, is meet with them, you know, individually, and if you can't really prepare for that, because you don't know what the needs are until you get there, and do a need analysis, you know, look at the challenges, do all that, and triage, and that's, I mean, another buzz to write individualized instruction, which is the hardest thing we do as teachers, is individual, it can be a myth in many classrooms, if you have forty students in some of my classrooms, this is a way to really individualize instruction in small classrooms, especially this pilot program, it's great that the school is small, because we can start with fewer students. So I think that's kind of why the pilot, as it happens, to see what works, what doesn't, and, you know, go in there and analyze it once we get in there.
And then your team does the measurements of success? What kind of yes?
Along with Tim. See, I keep bringing him into it.
Yeah, we would work, I mean, this is obviously, if this were to move forward, we would figure out what metrics we're going to use for success, for student achievement, you know, whether we're in a small group or individual students, kind of how we break down our test scores, you know, we look at the growth percentile. But to kind of echo Bonnie's point, you know, we have, pretty good way of the fall, right? We can't deviate from that for all students. This would be another layer to support that curriculum, so that it was more accessible for all students. We talk about, understanding by design as teachers, that's what Joan referred to, you think about the anecdote first, what do we want our kids to get out of us, and then develop from there. And I think that's, that's what they're saying as well. So it's, it's really, we're talking a lot about the same thing, as far as good instruction, good teaching. This plan, this program would really support that. And add a little layer, I think.
Like additional supplemental, like, you know, extra.
Is there interest in trying to get this out in front of the community before the school year starts?
I think what we need to do is kind of get the blessing here. You know, one of the things that Bonnie explained very well is that there's no financial burden to the district right now, okay? You know, we're not saying we need a hundred thousand dollars to do this, no, we're saying we need zero. We need some time, we need people to get together and think about maybe the type of opportunities and threats that this may have. But once we have support from the committees, support from, we've already talked about this as a leadership team, then we would, we would start to share information with families. We're going to start very small. You know, we talked about two classes, two teachers per building, so you can really keep track of the students that are working with us, the teachers who work with us, and you can really track the successes and the obstacles that come. We would still very much tell all the families about what's going on, like, that select group of students in those classrooms who want to start in year one.
Probably choose which classes, I'm sorry, that's a problem.
Well, no, I think, I think.
Because people ask for the question.
No, the questions are great. I think that we have to figure out, I think the teachers who are really excited about doing this, I think we want to start with teachers who are excited about this, obviously we want to force them to do this. So you take those teachers who are really excited about this opportunity, who want to learn, who want to work with this program, and I think you can start there. I think in talking with both building principals, we have a handful of teachers in both, both schools who really want to do this.
Can I give you an example, just on a micro level, something I did in my former life, I taught sixth, seventh, and ninth grade, English, Language Arts, Literature, and Social Studies. And a team of teachers got together, and it was a math teacher, ELA, Social Studies, Science, everybody got together, and came up with this interdisciplinary plan for this one thing students were really struggling with. The math teacher, neither nor, in his creative project, was the most central person, because his students were struggling the most with the concepts. The baby of this whole thing, sounds fluffy, it was fantastic, was that they built gingerbread houses, right? But they had to create a comprehensive math-based architectural plan for this house. Then the ELA were doing, you know, literature, having to do it, and so a Christmas And so at Christmas time, this would be the big culmination, you know, it was right before Christmas break, we have parent volunteers coming in and whipping up ice cream, doing this, doing that. And so that's the fun culmination that everybody's looking forward to. But along the way, it's the literature, it's the math plan, it's the design, it's who could... Then you get the contest, who's doing the most elaborate thing. It becomes this big, you know... So you take this really wicked hairy problem that students are struggling with and you make it beautiful. And I know that sounds lucky, but that's really what happens. They get psyched about it. And it becomes this incredibly, yeah, just an exciting, beautiful thing. And then they're all walking home eating each other's gingerbread cookies. See, that's floating on a bus. That's something we didn't think about after. I'm going to take that one for the team. That was a valid idea. Should have done parent pickup, lesson learned. But that's just one example that, you know, we've done it. Yeah, it was incredible.
Now, I think that if people at home are watching this, they're going to ask, what do we do now? If you're a parent, what would be the best way to ask more questions?
I think when we get to that point, we would do, you know, data forums to discuss this. Some of what we offered for our transition for sixth grades up. We want to get the information out, email out, but then welcome to bring the families in to talk about these things. To show, maybe have more of all of you there again to do the presentation about what this actually is.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And I want to keep our eye on, to me, what the big prize is. And that is that we put a stick in the ground. After a couple of years and it's proven to be effective, we put a stick in the ground and says, this is the place you come when you want to have, when you want your child to be an innovator. When you want your child to be a creative thinker, you've got to get them in school in North Worthville. This isn't a place you go for football. This isn't a place you go for theater. This is the place you go if you want your kid to be a creative thinker. And to the place, I imagine, a day when the cat lab credential, when you've graduated with a cat lab credential, that it's attractive to colleges and employers. Let's think that way. Let's think about how we take our school, going back to Deb. You know, your committee back in 2010 said, let's make this a niche school. I think we all kind of know that. I think we know that a niche school might be a really good positioning for us. We're saying, let's make this creative thinking, creative skills, creative ability, creative action. Let's make that our niche because it's one nobody else is selling in this area. There's no one else calling themselves that.
And we're handing it to you. It's still fitting with our community legacy too. I remember going to college and Longview was part of my identity as a North Worthville resident. I mean, I didn't even know if you realized that when I sent it to you, but we're proud of that. I feel like you put one, you just write the words Longview on Facebook. I saw so-and-so, and I heard so-and-so. I remember Tyler, and I remember, you know, who I saw on the internet, who I saw. So I think that alone draws people too, is the idea of North Worthville having Longview. It's just a real point of pride and identity.
And then in the fact of the townhouse committee, which is quietly, like the stuff they're doing is so huge, but stuff you can't write about because it's not really attractive. They are busy creating that entire building to be a creative life center because they have found through research that building a creative economy is the way we get tax offers into the town. Because you get people coming into big name places, concerts, makerspace, all sorts of artisan stores. So this fits with the town branding and where that's heading. So, you know, I know I probably, I start talking about branding and marketing because that's my love, but I think this would fit within what's happening in the town. And I also believe that as a town, when we all start pulling our oars in the same direction... I'm so sorry, I've been sitting with my back to you. The, when we all start pulling our oars in the same direction, our town could really be a very cool hip town that people want to move to. They want to come spend their money here, definitely with what the townhouse committee is building in the center of town. But they'll also want to live here because we're going to be churning out great education. Not talking about arts programs, not talking about trumpet players. We're talking about people who get in it.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us this platform.
Hope you didn't offend any trumpet players.
I know. I think I put a dig in on the trumpet.
Hey, if you might, I'm going to slide.
Exactly. I know it's a lot to guess, so.
Give the big view. So the committee, we're supposed to vote on, we have a motion to accept this. And we actually should have done this in prior further discussion. Is there a motion to accept this new pilot program in the schools? I'll move to accept it.
Want to say it?
I'd just like to say before we vote on it, I think it's a great idea. I think it falls in line with what's already been developed. Trying to cultivate, you know, a new engineering department, basically. And it falls in line with the whole scheme idea. And I'd just like to say, when I was a kid, I was in class, I was like, why don't the math teachers help us learn what we're supposed to be learning in science? And it never made sense to me. There was no collaboration back then, like there is now. And clearly, this program falls in line with that. I guess I was ahead of my time. And again, the whole idea of music, because that being an uprise, I think is a great idea. And I completely agree with it. I remember sitting at home with my parents' library of books, even having a TV, and reading, it's like a piece of music, listening to classical music. So that was, you know, a way of immersing myself. So it's a great lever to elevate a child's mind. And music is a great instrument for that, unintended. They're all intended. Yeah. Almost 99% of the time. So any other comments or discussion on this?
So I'm fairly new to town. I've been here for almost three years. And one thing that I've noted for a small town, we have an amazing group of people who live here that are very community-minded, they're very talented, and they're willing to give. So, you know, I'm sitting here writing down the names of people. Oh, again, this person needs to know this. This other person needs to know this.
Isn't it something?
So, you know, I think that, you know, this could be a way for the community to become involved. And I don't see any takeaways here from this situation. It's a wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And we finally have an administration that wants the community to invest in. So it's so good. The timing is great.
And I was just mentioning, I went up with the art the other day, how I thought it would be awesome to have, like, thinking of ways to get the community more involved is to have, identify senior citizens in the community who have skills and talents and experiences that can bring in and help that community. So I think this would be a great vehicle for that as well. Is that also built a sense of community, strength of bonds, and this kids are better? But they understand, you know, the older generation's better. And some kids don't grow up with a body of people around them, they have that range of age, even just the age.
I think it's so true. And imagine a situation where the kids are learning about some point in the history of the Vietnam War era or the Civil Rights Era, whatever that era is. And then when you speak with folks at the senior center and find out somebody who lived through an interesting part of that, they meet with them, but then write a song about that person's life story. And then the team over here creates a video around it with images from that. Then the entire community has an opportunity to feel proud of that. Thank you for seeing its value. I'm very excited.
So all favor of this pilot program for cat lab being initiated?
I'd like to be on the committee, the subcommittee group.
Yeah, that would be a lot of fun. Wonderful. That'll be our next step. So can you start honking me the beginning of the week?
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, goes around. Great, moving on.
All right, so I attached our most recent bench reports for your review. Seeing these here, are there any questions that we can answer for anybody?
Any other comments? Supervision's report.
All right, let me just get there in one second. Awards.
Yeah, award pages.
Award pages. All right, so something I believe that we've been doing for four or five months now, just updating the committee on staff that have either departed or have joined, I don't know, Fort Field Public Schools. So I think we were a robust list. I mentioned four members who are resigning, excuse me, retiring. So I added those names as well. And then before I read the second vote, I think, I don't want to steal either Mr. Dureos or Mr. Priestley's study. There's a lot that goes on at the end of the school year between promotion, graduation, awards nights. We had a new scholarship being issued at the high school, which was fantastic. So they had a lot to share. There's a lot that gets packed into that last three to four weeks of school. So I think everybody on the admin team, the teachers, the kids, they're all retired from June, whatever. There's a lot going on. So. But I do also just want to, even though she's not retiring, I do want a person, freshman today, Ms. Sarah Priestley, who has been a member of the North Fort Field Public School for 16 years. She started her teaching career here for 11, I mean, 11 years at both the high school and the elementary school. And then for the past five, has served as the proud principal of the elementary school. Sarah is moving on to Apple, which I'm sure she's going to explain more. But we are very lucky to have had you. You've done a fantastic job. You've been a fantastic leader for our elementary school, for our district. So we want to wish you all the best of luck, and there'll be some big shoes to fill. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then I also attached, I know this is a little bit dated, but they come out a little bit after the fact. I will share quarter four with you in the fall, but this is quarter three for Southern Mountain County Education Collaborative. Just to kind of give you an update of what's going on in the collaborative, which we are a member of. We had Arnold speak a few months ago about a capital fund initiative. But just to give us an update of how many students base service throughout their collaborative and what's going on with SWAC. So I wanted to add that to the my report slot.
Thank you. Any comments, questions on this? Administrators reports. Who wants to go first?
All right, so at ICSTE, we just finished the year in VHS. We had step update for grades five and six, next year's sixth and seventh grades at the end of May, hosted by our student council. Students spent the day learning about our school, visiting classrooms and meeting teachers. The day ended with a band concert and pep rally, which all the students really enjoyed. May 29th is our first awards night for our graduating senior class. Awards were given for athletics, academics, and scholarships. And just to acknowledge our senior class, this year's graduating class earned over $43,000 in college scholarships. That does not include any money they received, scholarships they received from the colleges they were going to. So really impressed with this year's senior class. Friday, May 31st, we had a field day. The students had a great time with a cookout and games afterwards. Studio sponsor of Slip and Slide. Lots of fun for everybody. Our graduation ceremony was June 2nd. The auditorium was packed with proud family members and all our graduating seniors. Ceremony featured a guest speaker and multiple students being recognized for their academic achievements. I just want to wish all our seniors good luck and congratulations to all the graduates. Also want to give a special announcement. We gave one student who is going to NACI as well. Monday, June 3rd, our students elected new class officers for grades in seventh through 12th. Each candidate gave a speech for their respective classes before the students voted. Congratulations to all our class officers. Thursday, June 6th, we had our high school awards ceremony. Awards were presented to high school students from each teacher at North Worthfield High School. The awards ended with the book awards presented to the high school upperclassmen from our guidance department. Friday, June 7th, we had our eighth grade step up day. Eighth grade students were given awards and had a promotion ceremony. They had a dance at the end of the night. And special thanks to Ms. Grayton, I forgot to mention Ms. Swanson, for putting this all together. Finally, the weekend with our high school finals. Kids did a great job. I'm excited to start. Really looking forward to next year. Thank you.
I noticed the, some training with our ropes course. Can we tell the community this a little bit?
Yeah, so Dan Reardon is heading that down to the elementary school. But we have several teachers trained from the elementary school into high school. So we have to start you, this ropes course you very rarely see in any schools in the state. So finally, we're going to be able to have people train so we can start using our ropes course either during the PDP or after school with the club. So we're excited about that.
Great.
Yeah.
They sort of had that training, plus they knew whether it was paid for by the state or the school program. So that was all wrapped into the money that we, that we were in the right.
Fantastic. Another draw for the school. Thank you, Ms. Priestley.
Thank you. So we had a couple of transition activities for our fifth and sixth graders that they prepared to fill off in the school next year. The junior conference, the student council members posted that on May 23rd. So there was really just like a lot of workshops and leadership opportunities that they could engage in and get to know this building. We also did some shadow days on the June 3rd and 4th. We have field day, we have our math and summer night, summer reading night on May 21st. But the piece of my report that I want to focus on the most was the math growth score. So we finished our year with our spring testing interval. And I just wanted to share some of that data with you all because it's very exciting. So the following slides in your packet, just kind of go through, I'm not going to go through every single slide, but I want to just point to the highlights. So on the first slide that has the sort of rainbow bars that says growth and achievement for math, that's a comparison of last year's data versus this year's data. So if you look at the growth that we saw this year, our growth was in the 69th percentile, where last year it was in the 39th percentile. So we've seen some amazing growth this year in math, which is really exciting. If you go, the next slide is the quadrants for growth and achievement. Again, it's a comparison of last year's data and this year's data. Last year, most of our, almost all of our scores were in the lower growth and varied between low and high achievement. This year, everything, you know, with the exception of a couple of grade levels, is in the high achievement and high growth quadrant, which is just amazing. So that's just a nice visual to kind of see how that's all moved and shifted. Just as a reminder, we're in our first full year of implementation with the new math program that we piloted last year. Last year, only three of the grade levels piloted the version of math program that we used this year. And so one of the observations we made was that classrooms who were in their second year of implementation for this math program made the most amount of growth. Which did go really well, it's money well spent. This is clearly a program that is very accessible for our students and it's showing results. And the teachers are working really hard in that content area. If you go down to the next set of rainbow bars, it's our reading results. And there's not much change from last year. So that, you know, as our literacy leadership committee was thinking about the direction that our... was thinking about the direction that our literacy program is going to go in, you know, we use this data to inform our decisions around, you know, recommending the purchase of a new ELA program as well, which is something that we've put in for the budget for next year, and I have some more information on that further down, but again, you look at the quadrants, and we're not seeing a lot of movement, I think there's, there's pieces of the program that we're currently using that are falling short, they're just, they're not based in the science of reading, and they're, and they're just not good practices, so we're going to shift our approach a little bit. When you go down to the achievements by grade band, those are like the multiple rows of rainbow bars, I'm not going to draw all of them, but if you scroll to the one that has math in grade four, it's like mostly blue, that is just an insane amount of growth, grade four, I just have to give them a shout out because they absolutely killed it this year in terms of their growth, they just, they were amazing, and I cannot wait to see our impact scores next year, I know I won't be here, but I'm going to have my eye on Desi when those scores come out, because I'm just so excited about it. I'd also like to point your attention, if you scroll down to grade four ELA, so the grade four reading slide, and it also has a lot of blue, more than the other grade levels, and I point that out because grade four is the only grade level that piloted the curriculum that we're going to buy all year long. So when you look at the amount of growth students made in that one year with this new program, it's very encouraging to think that, you know, we're going to be spending all this money on this new curriculum, that we already started to see results in just that one pilot year. Grade six also piloted the curriculum, but only for half the year, she started half the year with our old program and then shifted to using it, so you can quite see the results there, but grade four used it for a full year, she loved it, our literacy leadership committee was able to observe in her classroom the lessons that she was, you know, doing, and we're just very excited about it. So, the discussions, conclusions in the last couple of slides, just kind of highlight everything I just said, there's just some bulleted items about why our math scores improved so much, since it's done a lot of work, it's all outlined there for you, and then the ELA, when I mentioned that grade four was the only grade level that used that new curriculum, and it was, and it showed, showed some good results, so, yeah, that's, that's where we're at with our data, and, you know, encouraging for, for next year.
I believe that the last assessment of grade four was also a rock star.
The what?
Grade four was also a rock star the last.
Oh, yeah.
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 So there's, there's a lot of great things going on across all grade levels, but grade four is really...
Yeah, special shout out to the grade 14, in particular, Mrs. Peterson, she's just a phenomenal educator, and, you know, we, we definitely encourage our teachers to work together and work from each other, and, you know, she's been more than happy to share her practices, and it's been, it's been really great. Any questions?
Sometimes not lead.
I know, I know, it's hard, it's hard because there's so much exciting stuff.
You can be here and see what they do.
I know. I feel like, you know, and that is, you know, just as far as the last piece of my report, I just wanted to shout out the hard work of my colleagues, you know, I didn't do it alone, you know, I feel like I led this work, but it really was the whole team that made this all happen, this these past five years, that we've made so much progress, so I'm excited to do that, you know, in APA, but I feel like we're going to make good hands with the staff we have here, and whoever comes in my place, there's a lot of good things going, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's the one.
Thank you. It's you, Lynn.
Oh.
I'll go first.
So, all of the data, which is the annual assessments for progress, already our students have been certified, and our ELA teacher, Caitlin Marshall-Powell, has begun end-of-year assessments to be used as a baseline for services at the beginning of the 24, 25 school year. Caitlin, Brynovich, and I have continued to review and update special education documents, letters, and forms, ensuring they meet regulatory practice standards, seniors have received letters informing them that they can obtain copies of their special education records if they so desire. Caitlin has also been reviewing the student files for content to determine when they are eligible for destruction, as part of the process, she's also ensuring we have stored it as a secure space. Amy Emery, who was my successor, has met with Caitlin and myself twice, it's actually now three times since I've written this, and will meet with us at least one more time before she takes over as director. The, whoops, the work on the process and procedures manual continues with input from Amy, teams have made evaluation decisions regarding assessments to be performed for three-year reevaluations occurring during the first four months of the 24, 25 school year, I also should add that consents for the evaluations that are occurring early in that first semester have already gone out, and we have certified our Desi homeless and foster care data, there's still work to be done on for circuit breaker, and we, what I did not add is we have already begun to get reports back regarding the indicator that Desi can track of what grade leading students are doing, and I am currently working on getting ready to submit the indicator for early childhood outcomes. That's everyone.
Great, thank you very much.
Questions?
Enjoy second term. Great, technology update? Real high level, looks like everything's been updated.
Yeah, I just want to highlight that one of the bigger things on this list is that the staff, there's a core group of teachers that underwent Alma Student Information System training two weeks ago, and then leadership, we'll be going through that tomorrow, but that group of teachers will then become teachers and mentors for the other staff members, and we'll roll this out to everybody next fall. That was a bigger number than Justin, it was pretty much, you can do, so I'm excited about that.
What's the SNAP software?
That is for school nurses, for the medical, kind of data collection software that we are going to use it, so Miss Floyd, next training for that, we'll be going, that she'll train Miss Lisa at the elementary school, so that they'll have a better system to kind of track theirs through our patient data.
And the EdPlan software, what's the utilization?
Yeah, so the EdPlan is the way that we, we track our special education data, our new YEP process, which is being rolled out with fidelity next year, so we purchased this software to, to kind of align with our Alma assist programming, so that our special educators and their families know exactly what's going on, and we're up to date with current with YEPs, and that's, that's all shared electronically.
Next one, just on, outstanding list of items for building grounds.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing I want to highlight is that we, we had Schneider or some parts that are out last week, replacing controllers, we're going to need one, it needs to be, one more to be replaced, and that was part of the, the IBAC ring funding that we secured, so updating the software so that we can regulate the temperature and the climate of our buildings better, and part of that, we updated or purchased refurbished newer versions of some old controllers that really have, we kind of seen better days. So I believe the total, we got how many, that were?
Controlled?
Yeah.
Nine at the elementary school, and separate high school that needs to be replaced, or you're waiting, one more at the elementary school, and then there'll be everything online.
Great.
That was a, took us two years to complete, I guess can be applied to the grant, we just didn't get it done in the first year, but we received it again, and we're setting out a new application.
Any other comments on any of these items?
Look at this stuff, we've got to poke around in the subcommittee.
Yeah, I did, yeah, when I was up here, when I was up here with my daughter, playing around, I noticed the backside of the elementary school, I don't know what you'd call it, there's an architectural element, these vertical pieces of wood, decorative column, things with the base of them, there's holes rotted out, and there's birds nesting in them, something else to fix, but, so, a few birds flying out a week ago, so we're going to take care of.
What kind of bird?
Just curious.
I have my, I've got a little app that identifies bird calls, but I couldn't, I couldn't get it. But it's, they're just, all those little things that you can take care of. So you can get pricing through the side of the bears?
We have at least one quote, I mean, we're still making four secondary intention three quotes.
This one we can nail eternally, just like, you know, maybe this department, bag of concrete, ever chisel.
Possibly, but I, I think, I think we still have the bulk of the process, because the scope of the, of the project is, it's not where it's just one section of concrete, it's, it's, it depends on, you know, lots of the elementary school all the way around and high school itself. I wish it was that easy.
All right. Any old business? I think the last thing we had was the inventory.
I, I still not received that last piece.
New business, subcommittee assignments, really with two members on attendance tonight, this is going to have to be tabled, I will reach out an email and gauge what's interesting committee, so they'll have to serve on, and hopefully we'll have that addressed in the next meeting. Any comments on that? There's a vote required, I imagine we have to vote to move that on to the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll be tabled for the next meeting.
Second. All in favor, table for the next meeting? Thank you. Executive session?
We want to discuss, discuss.
All right, I move that we adjourn the regular meeting, close the regular meeting and move to executive session.
Only returning to...
To close the regular meeting.
Vote, all vote.
In favor?
Tim Gannon, yes.
John McGarry. Yes. Thank you everyone.
Have a good day.